I'd like to call our five o'clock meeting to order. We've got a whole big crowd here, that's okay. First item is the presentation of the plan Lake Greenwood 2.0 with Mr. Tripp Muldro, Principal, and Arnett Muldro and Associates.
Good evening Chairman Shealy, a member of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I also have Councilman Pruitt, Dane Pruitt, from Greenwood County. He's the Vice Chair of Greenwood County Council, but his district also covers a great part of the lake and joins the Newberry County portion of the lake. So we hastily triangulated and said, is okay if Councilman Pruitt comes tonight? He can't necessarily speak for the body, governing body, but he may be able to let you all in on some of the discussion that happened last night that I may not be able to fill you in on. And so this has been a, we were talking about, it's been an over two-year process and what I'll do is I'll give you a presentation of the overview. We can dig deeper in the document if you've got bigger questions or detailed questions. Let's see, I don't know if I'm, Jeff, am I set up to?
You may have to slide the button on the left side.
Oh, over here. Oh, yeah.
The one that says on?
Yeah. So there was a plan completed in 2015 and that plan had some Lawrence County involvement, not a lot of Newberry County involvement, and it was pretty much Greenwood County led with some Lawrence involvement. This one's a regional update. So Newberry County, Greenwood County, Lawrence County, all at the beginning of this process agreed to participate in this. I wasn't part of those discussions, that was before we were engaged in the process. And so this one is something that you all as a body, my understanding is initiated. And so the purpose and the reason that the revisit is happening is that growth in, on the lake, growth in South Carolina, I don't have to talk to you, I'm just reaching to the choir, is just off the charts now. And so it became timely to relook at this plan, align the growth, align the environmental protection, and then look at lake life, kind of those priorities moving in. It's kind of the same themes. Now, the prior plan was real fine-grained. It had something like ninety-two individual recommendations. We really buttoned that down to a lot less. And really, there's kind of a big overarching recommendation that almost everything is, I won't say contingent on that, it's more of, we can do all this other stuff, but until we do this main thing, it's kind of, and I'll get to that in the presentation. Our study area included not just the lakefront properties, but properties adjoining the lakefront. This was determined before we began, but we, it totally made sense. I followed major roadways around the lake and certainly includes portions of Newberry County and your lakefront and inward from your lakefront. We had awesome community input. We had two public meetings and an online meeting. We had almost a hundred people at each of those meetings. The online meeting was about seventy-six people. We also had a survey. We had almost thirteen-hundred people complete that survey. It doesn't show up in the report per se, but that response was proportionate to the amount of lakefront that each county had. So it was kind of cool to see Newberry residents, Newberry County residents responded proportionally to the lakefront that's in Newberry County. Lawrence County residents responded proportionally instead of Greenwood. We didn't, we couldn't have asked for a better distribution of responses. We had eight stakeholder roundtables. We had, your planning staff member came to a couple of those meetings. Some of the top desires, a lot of this echoes the prior plan, more recreation, lakefront dining, and people still want more public access. And at the same time, there's this whole idea of preserving the natural beauty of the lake. So we want access, but we also don't want to compromise the lake itself. And then the key one that came out a lot, and this is from the citizens, we didn't have to, but more coordinated development process throughout. Water quality, always a concern. Septic-related issues were a concern. A lot of the older developments are on septic. It comes at a time that DEHAC wasn't monitoring septic as thoroughly as we might have today. And then you see this kind of, you know, when you have citizen responses, you have kind of a one response on one hand and another response on the other. So we want to preserve the natural beauty. We want more lakefront dining. Do those necessarily agree with one another? We want to have boater safety and we're worried about overcrowding on the lake, but we also want more access to the lake. So it's kind of this yin and yang that you see. One of the things that I learned from the county administrator in Greenwood is they actually assessed, and this wasn't overcrowding on the shore, this is overcrowding on the lake itself. They actually assessed the lake at peak times and non-peak times, and it really only hits that crowding level a couple of days a year. It's at July 4th, the days you know it would be. Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day, those are the kind of times, but otherwise it's well within capacity. We understand those concerns. Erosion and sediment, and then infrastructure needs. And this ranges from, we heard a lot, internet connection, Wi-Fi connection, and then on down to things like sewer, septic water being issues that folks are concerned with. Early on, folks were very concerned about the Conestee Dam upstream in Greenville County. That's been remedied, or is in the process of being remedied through a major allocation from the General Assembly to basically build a new dam in front of the old dam as a measure to protect downstream on the Saluda River and Lake Greenwood. What we saw and heard is just this, it's almost like this has been a mantra of the lake from the very beginning. And so this intersection of environment, lake and land, economic development, tourism, and then preserving that culture of the lake is a major driver in each of the counties. It represents a significant portion of the tax base in each of the counties. Proportionally in Newberry, it's less than it is in Greenwood. Totally makes sense because you're shoreline. And so we also, throughout this, we had the involvement of Connect Lake Greenwood and Preserve Lake Greenwood. So it's interesting because one of those is more on the economic development tourism side, the other one's more on the conservation side. There's always kind of a little bit of what I would characterize as healthy friction when you have groups like that. What we found is a lot of agreement on overall principles. There's been significant progress since 2015. There's been new public access points, Gateway Landing, River Fork Landing. There's been the branding and wayfinding, particularly along 221 at that gateway, and then of course the mixed-use development like Old Eight. And if you're not familiar with that, that is a major mixed-use development that's going on Greenwood County adjacent to Stony Point. It'll be, how many hundred units?
Possibility of seven hundred and fifty homes, car three, lighted, matten halls, and mixed commercial.
Right. So it'll be a mixed-use development with a variety of housing types and commercial development, and it's a kind of geared as a top-notch development, kind of a game changer. Some challenges, I think one of the key ones that keeps rising to the top, and it's interesting that we observe this as a consulting team, but it's interesting that those in the know on the lake understand it too, and that's the disjointed zoning and land use policy in each of the counties. Each county has a different approach to how they deal with the lake and whether it's zoning, land use. Lawrence County has fairly fresh development regulations and no zoning. Y'all have regulatory domain over the lake. Greenwood County has zoning over the lake. There's disjointed septic oversight. So Greenwood County basically inspects any new septic that comes in, certifies that, but we don't have that same, you know, policy in each county. And then there's not really, there's this informal structure where y'all can meet and talk and administrators can meet and talk. There's not, and there's the informal structure that happens in Connect Lake Greenwood and Preserve Lake Greenwood, but there's not a formal structure at all. It's all kind of happens by happenstance, for lack of a better term. The other thing that we see is an opportunity for state park improvements. And I'm doing a lot of work, as you know, Councilman Sees, on state park work in the state. It's been an interesting time. We're coming off of a period where the state, the General Assembly's been dumping out quite a bit of money into our state park system. That time is coming to a close. We're optimistic because it's a real gem in our state, but we see Greenwood State Park as being a significant one that has not seen that same level of investment as other parks have. So that may be an opportunity. I think that's particularly important for citizens in Newberry because y'all are really close to the state park. So we worked with a firm out of Mississippi that did land capacity and build-out, assessing what the land uses are on the lake, what's been developed as residential, what's still open space or forest land, some of the commercial nodes. There's industrial along the lake as well, as you know, and then of course protected and scenic areas. From there, we were able to develop areas that were developable, and so the ones that you see in green are conservation, they're basically kind of off the table. The things you see in yellow are already developed, and the red ones are potential development spots. From there, we were able to look at some nodes of development where we saw some opportunities. We didn't really identify any node for development in Newberry because a lot of your shoreline is built out at this point. And what we're finding in our observations, a lot of the lake is built out. So there are only a handful of points that we're looking at. One is south of 221, actually I think that's north of 221. We have another on the Lawrence County side. One that's closest to you is south of the state park. And this is open undeveloped land that the owner has not said anything other than the Old Eight development, which we know is underway. So, but we identified it as, you know, as vacant. It's not protected during conservation or park or anything else, and it's probably ripe for some kind of major capacity. We revised up our development numbers. We have a low scenario, a medium scenario, and a high, and we distributed that proportionally. Now, where we're seeing it track right now is our low scenario is probably going to get pretty much absorbed by that Old Eight development with seven hundred units. And granted that our timeframe, you know, we're looking at a twenty-year timeframe, so you know, that low scenario is probably already passing us by. We're probably landing in between that medium and high scenario now with growth. And then what we did was an allocation based on the developable parcels. So while we don't have a big red dot on it, we have little indications where individual units would probably go. And so we're looking at a medium scenario in Newberry County of about a hundred units over the next twenty years, a high scenario of up to two hundred and forty units of residential in each, in each scenario. For Greenwood, of course, having the majority of the shoreline, it's going to be significantly We looked at and reviewed all the environmental reports that have been done over the years. I believe you all sit on the, have representation on the Saluda River Coordinating Council, I think that's the name of the group. Basically, all the entities along the Saluda River from beginning to end basically are coordinating on that watershed, and it's a variety of interests. They don't always play well in the sandbox. I think the government entities are kind of more neutral in this, but you've got the environmentalists on one side, you've got the developers on the other side, and local governments are kind of, you know, for lack of a better term, probably mediating some of this at the administrative level. And then also the state have DNR involved and others. And so again, we come back to these three themes and the recommendations are built around those. So we're looking at, you know, a model for collaborative planning, productive policies. We'll look at coordinated planning across all three counties. I'll talk about that. Align the zoning and land development, and look at, you know, lake-sensitive design. So some of our specific recommendations are geared toward Greenwood County, adopt, update Greenwood County's comprehensive plan. It is a, in Greenwood County, they have a joint city-county planning commission. It's very unusual in South Carolina. And so that commission, there's a chance to update that for the city and the county and perhaps adopt a UDO instead of having different land regulations and zoning. And then looking at zoning code adoption in Lawrence County. For them, and we didn't really have a strong recommendation on the Newberry side because your portion, you already have some land use controls, and Lawrence County is just development regulations. And so there we're really looking at, and a lot of their land is upstream, and so we really want to be careful because a lot of the tributaries are coming from Lawrence. And so in some ways, we're trying to create a situation where it's politically feasible for that council to adopt these, these things. And then the big one that I'll come back to is what we're calling the Lake Greenwood Coordinating Council, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. Again, a code line audit, perhaps to do an overlay as an interim strategy, and then maybe have that sunset by 2030. Would love to see a greenway at some point connecting all the way around. There's some steps and indication that this could be happening in the state park and others. We know the benefits of that, and there's a conceptual plan that you see in the document. And then part of what we had in the discussion was wanting to have measurable outcomes. The prior plan was kind of do this, but didn't really have a timeframe on doing it, so we ended up putting years and end games on this. The environmental piece, I'm just going to skip on ahead. The comprehensive septic, septic system management program, currently at this point, there's just no, there's no comprehensive, there's no way to monitor it. And so any of the aging septic on here is kind of a, we'll respond in case of emergency rather than proactively go out after it. And this is not a, I want to be careful because I don't want to indict any of the three counties. This is a coordinated effort that needs to involve DNR and needs to involve, you know, the counties themselves and really kind of step up to the plate. For the longest time, DNR basically was just managing, you know, almost like on the back of a napkin, you know, septic systems. And of course, the watershed collaboration, we'd love to have a watershed coordinator, some person that answers to this, and then maybe some high-impact pilot project like a buffer restoration or sediment reduction. One of the things that we saw is that if folks want dredging in their cove, they pay for it themselves. And so how do we look at maybe having something that could proactively deal with that over time? time? And then expand monitoring and public reporting and have a state-of-the-lake report, this kind of a synthesis of reports that each entity, like the volunteer entities are doing, they're kind of doing their own state-of-the-lake. But how do we have one that's kind of coordinated amongst the governing bodies as well? And then finally, we have Lake Life, and really, I'm putting the big recommendation into this category because it really threads the needle between environmental and development and policy. And without the policy, we're really not going to, Lake Life can, we can talk about the beauty of the lake and boats on the lake and signs and all that, but without having some degree of coordination in the next phase, we're kind of batting it, you know. It's kind of like the icing on the cake. Let's work on the cake. And so I'm going to get into the next slide because we can talk about boat or safety and events and festivals and all that, but this is really the meat of the plan, is what we're asking for first, is a memorandum of understanding among the three counties that will focus on aligning zoning, shared grant applications, watershed and septic management and recreational planning. Basically, look, we agree to sit down and talk about this together as three entities that have a voice in this. The benefits is that at this point, we're not looking at any taxing authority. It builds on existing relationships. We think it's time through this process that the stars are aligning to have these discussions, whereas probably before, it wasn't. The fact that the three counties agreed to do this plan kind of sends that signal. It does require political will and a formal commitment. I think anything we do, rather than me just talking to y'all, you know, having these formal meetings is going to be that key piece. The second one we would envision is actually creating something that's allowed in South Carolina but unusual in South Carolina, and that would be a joint planning commission where the citizens on the lake actually would have a planning commission that would, in some ways, absolve you at the county level, you know, from having to deal with land use on the lake itself. They would be the ones that would help direct, perhaps. We don't get into the whole appointment process, but help direct the counties to have the appointed members. I don't, we didn't get into the architecture of how it would work. State law allows multi-county jurisdictions to create planning bodies. And so this could be an advisory body. It could just make recommendations back to planning commissions in each county. It could have, you know, more teeth in it where their recommendations become binding. And it perhaps could be zoning-based, shoreline protection and growth management. So what we're doing is basically, okay, we're going to agree to talk. Our goal at the end of the day is to have something that has resident voices recognized, gives the elected officials some cover on this, and frankly, we need that because zoning is controversial. Gives elected officials cover by saying, we're going to localize this, and you'll get to say what happens on your lake. Because what happens upstream in Lawrence County affects everybody in Newberry who has lakefront property, same goes with Greenwood and so forth. The third one, this one's the one where I put the deadline way out in the future so that I don't get taken out to the back pasture here, and that one's considering a special purpose district. This is putting the money where the planning goes. So the first one is we will agree to talk, but what I wanted to do is say, look, even if we don't get to that point, there are going to be exit ramps. If we just talk, that's one step. And we decide not to go any further and create a planning commission, well, we talked. That's a step in the right direction. Create a planning commission that seems to be working, we can exit out of that. Next one, if it seems to be working and things are really going well, why don't we have some dedicated funding and create a special purpose district where the taxpayers along the lake, in the planning area, whatever is determined, are going to have some degree of millage that will contribute to improvements in their own area. And y'all know special purpose districts, we've got a lot of them in South Carolina. They can be used for fire, sewer, planning, anything designated. It would provide lasting lake-focused government governance. It would likely kick back to you all at council, who would be appointing folks to this body if it's not elected by the locals. It is a big haul. It is a big lift. I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I'm not going to say it any other way. It would require a referendum of the properties involved in each county. That's a big lift. That'd be a petition or referendum, and then there'd be overhead, and you'd actually probably end up having, there's lake management entity at Greenwood County. There's a person and people that are involved in that every day. Greenwood County has jurisdiction over only the docks in Newberry and Lawrence County. They have no jurisdiction over the land. And for Newberry, it's probably not as much of an issue as it is, as I said, in Lawrence where the headwaters and a lot of the other tributaries come in. But I wanted to kind of put this out here is that we're not saying this needs to be the end goal. We need to write it into the plan and say this could be an end goal, to be able to have a sustainable thing so that this thing's not just floating out here, you know, as something in the ether. I am generally loathe to create something like this, but this seemed like the cleanest way to graduate towards something that's meaningful over time. And with growth in the state as it is, we've got to be realistic about this because it's only going to get more pressure as we move ahead. With that, I am happy to answer any questions y'all have. I know Councilman Prulley would be happy to answer any questions. I may not be able to answer some, I may have to defer to him, so.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
So simply just talking about the referendum in each county. What happens if one county, it doesn't pass in one county and it passes in the other two counties or only passes in one county?
I thought about that on the way here. It's a really good question. God, I don't say this, I'm just going to cut to the chase. This may not be politically correct, but there's one lever that Greenwood County has, and that's the docks. And so the nuclear option would be Greenwood County says, you're not going to pass it, then we're going to raise dock fees, and we're going to raise them to a point to the residents of this county, you're going to, not this county, whatever county. Basically, you're going to pay. That's the lever they've got because the citizens of Greenwood County own the lake. And that's a nuclear option. I would hate to see that happen.
And that has not been discussed, by the way.
That has not been discussed. No one in Greenwood has asked that. At this point, you asked a question that has not been asked in Greenwood. And it's something that I literally was thinking about as I was driving down here today, like, what happens if one county doesn't pass it? It's like the only lever Greenwood has, the only lever, would be dock fees.
Because it would be just the residents along the lakeshore that'd be voting on that, right?
Correct. I think depending on how you constitute it, but it makes sense to be the residents on the lakeshore, even though our planning area went further in.
That was a question I had as well. So the land that you're intending to be affected by this plan would only be the directly contingent land to the lake.
I think realistically and politically thinking, looking ahead, and this wasn't asked in Greenwood County either, although our study area was bigger because we get parcels that are adjacent to parcels, along roadways, abut roads that get to the lake. I just don't see from a planning standpoint, if I own property that doesn't touch the lake and doesn't sit on a tributary, then why would I need to have a concern about that? Also, from a market standpoint, and I'm kind of a market realist on that, is that the growth's going to come shoreline backwards. It's not going to come road to the shoreline to this point.
But if you had a tract of land that was developed or, you know, currently undeveloped and it's developed, then that full tract of land would fall under this.
Yeah, yeah, probably would. It'd probably be a situation where, again, when it's existing, you wouldn't just cut a parcel in half. It'd probably go parcel by parcel. Now, there may be a mechanism to somehow decouple something in the future, but it doesn't seem to make logical sense. And this goes to what I would be explaining to constituents who may have concerns. It would be if you have an existing home on the lake, your bill on this is going to be relatively low to the newcomer who's coming in and buying that new home, and we're going to let the folks that are creating the pressure bear the higher tax burden because those houses are typically going to be appraised higher, and they'll bear the larger weight. One of the things that we heard, and this wasn't asked in Greenwood County either, but is that people see the lack of regulation on the lake, particularly like the lack of a core line, as an advantage, and they see affordability as an advantage. Well, as an economic development person, you know, affordability is, is a, it's not an advantage, it's a lasting advantage. You don't want to be the cheapest place. You want to be the best place. And so the idea that, again, I think the idea would be existing residents wouldn't have to bear a great burden because over time, the new values are going to outpace it, particularly in this county because a lot of your shoreline's already developed.
Now, will each county be responsible for their tax base?
I think under the special service district, if it were passed in each county, that body would be the one that did it, but in practice, it would probably be collected by each county, treasurer, each county, what, I'm sorry, my name.
Yeah, millage would be imposed.
Millage would be imposed by the county and collected by each county and remitted back to the entity, just like it's done for cities.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Or a school district, or a water district, or a sewer district, or a fire district. The counties in South Carolina collect and distribute back. But I put that down the road because frankly, I want each of the governing bodies now to be able to say that we, you know, we agree in principle to this and give you kind of a safe cover for down the road. I think the first one's the MOA or MOU. And that's why I put even the planning commission piece five years out. I was like, I just can't, I can't envision it happening sooner. We need to practice before we swim, no pun intended.
Absolutely. Any other questions? I don't have any. Thank you for your presentation.
It's been an honor working on it. It's been great having the citizens involved, and I will say, I think the time is right. We get a real sense, I wouldn't say urgency, it's more of an opportunity that folks see. We had very, very positive input. We had not had people pitch forests and flames during this process.
I know you can attest to that.
I'm excited about state park getting.
Look, I will say that will be an uphill push with your folks in the General Assembly in all three counties.
We happen to know a couple of them, too.
Yeah. My thought outsider, I mean, I live in Greenwood County on the Lawrence County line. My thought is I don't think it's too late, even though there's a new director, Joy Rangtry, she's fantastic. I love Paul, he's a great guy, but Joy's got a lot of energy, and so she could probably be very responsive to initiatives by the three counties.
Yeah, because this kind of falling down, I grew up a mile from Lake Greenwood State Park, and that was the only thing we had, you know, you go there for the boat ramp and all.
I'm sure your citizens are taking advantage of it, too.
I go camping over there.
Yeah.
I sure do.
You know, we need to do something, I think, but we have a good relationship with our local delegation. We have no problem reaching out to them to discuss it. I was going to say one other thing, too, and this would be a treasurer explanation type, but in Greenwood County, the way they did it prior to my getting elected was it's a lake impact fee, it's not additional millage, but they identified the properties on Lake Greenwood and actually some that are touching other properties. So it's, it is something that aren't on the lake, and that money goes into the pot to fund our lake management. It's about $600,000, and, you know, we have a director and, you know, all the things come up, the dock fees and all, but, you know, we're seeing that grow. I mean, we're stretching right now. We hired somebody else and, you know, them policing. And one other example I wanted to give since, if I may. Just last meeting, we had a homeowner from Lawrence County come over, and it was an issue about a boundary line. And when you get into coves, and there are many in Newberry County, and how the geometry of them go like this, and then you've got the property and the meets and bounds, and you've got one like this, and this one goes this way, and basically, this resident decided, well, you don't own that, the county does, I'm going to walk over here and use your dock. So then you got Greenwood County owns to the 440. Where do we stand? We let them permit the dock, and they built the seawall, but technically, they don't own it, so they want a boundary line agreement. Well, we don't want to give up property because the 440 can move. And then you got this resident who's got issues with the neighbor who had to call the sheriff's department in Lawrence County. So it's, it's a lot.
To Councilman's point, Mr. Chairman of the Council, the opposite also exists. There are meets and bounds that are over the water in some cases. So the 440 line doesn't match the meets and bounds of the property lines in any of the three counties. It's, look, it's an issue that everybody has inherited.
Oh, yeah.
I deal with more zoning stuff than I ever imagined.
I would imagine so. I would imagine so. Very good presentation.
Very good. We work with your questions, too. They're really good, and I think it's really important that y'all, you know, I don't know how to say it any other way. As a consultant, I don't like making a recommendation like a new taxing district. It's just not something I'm crazy about, but I wanted to give us enough oxygen to say, well, there's a process to get to that, but at least we kind of know that on the horizon, that could be a possibility, could be a possibility. But it's all provisional on the community, won't it?
That's right.
Jeff has my information. I have cards if you guys want them. I'd be glad. Like I said, I live in 96. It's just a 25-minute jump down 34 for me, and I made it a million times going to school. I'd be more than happy to sit down with any of you guys if you want.
That sounds great. We appreciate y'all's time and information. Excellent.
Coming out.
Appreciate you. You got one of those cards? I'll take it from you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I forgot mine, but I'll, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
There you go.
Thank you.
I can get a picture of his if you have.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Can't be paid for on my budget.
I appreciate it. I should have had something nicer.
Can't get paid for a dog.
These are a little bit nicer than the ones near you.
That didn't help you, but it did.
Those are nice cards, I tell you.
All right, y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that looks like that concludes everything we had for the 5 o'clock meeting.
It does, not knowing how long that would go and how many questions y'all might have, we took a conservative approach with the agenda, so.
Good. Do we have, do you have anything else that you would need to talk about?
I'll mix it with this one then.
All right.
Did we ever bring, do anything, I know at one time we had talked about putting up, trying to get cameras put up for different places?
We've got some limitations with the agenda, not having discussion topics listed, but...
Can't talk about?
Yeah, yeah. But I take, let me go look and see where we stand.
Soon as we adjourn, y'all can talk about it. Do I have a motion that we adjourn the 5 o'clock meeting? Talk about a motion by Mr. Councilman Fulmer, second by Mr. Councilman Sees. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned.
Get our regular meeting to order, Newberry County Council, and we're going to open with the invitation and pledge by Honorable Councilman Stewart Smith.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, as we stand in awe of your goodness and mercy today, we invite you to be present among us by the power of your Holy Spirit. Lord, grant us the wisdom and courage to force today's challenges with grace and strength to make a difference. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good seeing everybody out interested in public government, always exciting. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. We're going, we'll take them all as one if that's with no objection. A, Newberry County Council Public Safety and Courts Committee, April 28, 2025. A Newberry County Council Work Session, May 7, 2025. Newberry County Council Meeting, May 7, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept as read? Got a motion by Councilman Skir, Reader. Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
No. We have a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Wilmer. Second by Mrs. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Third is Public Appearance, Newberry Soil and Water Conservation District, Mr. Ben Sessler.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As many of you know, we try to come about every quarter and just give a little update on what we've been up to, maybe some accomplishments, hopefully not any problems, but if so, we'll make sure y'all can solve them for us. Few things we've been up to. Two weekends ago, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, hosted the Ag and Art Tour in Newberry County, had nine locations, 50 vendors at those farms, everything from beef to chicken to pork, homemade goodies, jam, art, all kinds of stuff. Some sites saw as many as 550 visitors. Now, I don't know how much overlap there is, but I'm willing to bet conservatively that that was at least 1,000 people coming into the county to see what our farms had to offer. Now, this past week, through some grant funding, we distributed books to Gallman Elementary, Rubin Elementary, Whitmire Community School, and Pomeria-Garminy. Did some storytimes, distributed books to over 150 students, kindergarten to fourth grade. We have plans with the local library this summer to host two storytime and book distribution events. We celebrated Conservation Stewardship Week in South Carolina. It's been about three weeks ago now. We do one statewide site visit a year, and this year it was in Newberry at the Belfast Plantation. Several presentations, including one on what it's like to be a commissioner, showed off our new mobile education lab, which we'll make sure we bring sometime, humongous enclosed trailer, graphics, all grant funded, no county funds spent, which is great. We're going to start programming and displaying that next month, so looking forward to showing that, and we'll talk about that more in the next quarter. We've hosted multiple cleanup events. We've partnered with area high school students to conduct a litter wars. Beta Club students from Mid-Carolina, Newberry High, and Whitmire Community School were challenged to see who could pick up the most litter. Newberry West End and Samsung also had cleanup events, and in the month of April, we removed 3,950 pounds of litter, 14 tires, and one mattress. Volunteered at the Henry Fishing Rodeo, donated supplies, helped some local youth catch some fish. With speaking of nine-year-old Lila Lake of Newberry, is the recent winner of our fishing story contest, and she's going to get in a fishing pole and some fishing tackle. Some big news, we were recently awarded a $40,000 outreach grant to promote NRCS programs for conservation. So those programs in and of themselves bring a lot of funding into this county every year. This is an additional $40,000 on top of that to help hopefully bring in more of those programs and more of that money. Speaking of that money, in 2024, NRCS received 58 applications. Quick reminder, that's our federal partner. We are the local branch, they are the federal branch, DNR in our particular state is the state branch. But NRCS received 58 applications, they paid out $1.46 million last year, over 26 contracts affecting 3,375 acres here in Newberry County only. All conservation and environmental projects, most of those went to farms, landowners, timber tracts, things like that. 2025, we've had 77 applications so far. Nine projects for $186,000 have been obligated. That is just the beginning. We do expect to easily cross the million-dollar mark, and that's all federal funds coming into our county. CSP is kind of a partner to, that is another plan that's run through NRCS. Last year, received 28 applications, funded 11 projects, an additional $934,000. This year, we had 54 applications, which is unusually high, and the decisions on which will be funded will start beginning of June, so we should have an update on that next time we do this. Camp Conservation, probably our biggest project of the year, June 16th. We already have 60 campers signed up and a wait list. Tons of fun activities planned, always a big hit. If you'd like to join us, we are looking for volunteers to everybody in the audience, and that would, I'm sure, look very good to all your constituents if any of y'all came to volunteer some time. Lastly, we're awarded $4,000, we awarded $4,000, four $1,000 scholarships to students attending secondary schools from or in Newberry County, two from Mid-Carolina, one from Newberry High, and one going to Newberry College. They'll be featured in The Observer soon. As council knows, y'all, us, are not the ones that actually get the work done, it's the good employees of the county, of the district, that actually do the work, the boots on the ground. We are no different. The vast majority of the funding that Newberry County gives us goes to our single district employee, Krista Lukowski. All of the programs I just told you about happened because of her, but that is the main reason we use the funding, and it is much appreciated, and we hope y'all think we're doing a good job with it. So, that's what I have. Do I have any questions?
Thanks for everything you're doing.
And awesome job.
Happy to be here. If y'all need us, you know how to find us.
Thank you, Ben. I personally want to thank you for everything that you do. You do a great job, holding water conservation district and every, all the staff, so that is a huge benefit to the county. And if, if anybody is not familiar with them, I encourage you to reach out to them. Great programs, great benefit, landowners, not, not just larger farms, but all the landowners. So, I have utilized funds myself, and it is a huge benefit.
And every landowner in the county should be looking.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I encourage anybody, if you're not familiar with it, to try to, try to reach out to them, ask questions, they'll, they'll be glad to help you for sure. So, thank you.
Always do a great job. We appreciate you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, number four, recognitions. We'll turn it over to Mr. Shaker.
Yes, sir. Chairman, I appreciate you very much, members of council. Good evening, everyone, and attendance tonight. We've, this is, I think, our favorite part of the meeting, where we get to recognize employees for service anniversaries. We do that every five years, so we do a five-year recognition. And this evening, we've got two very special employees from Newberry County that we're going to recognize, one for tenure, tenure recognition, and the other for 15 years of service of the county. And our first person, Mr. Rick Farm, our Economic Development Director. Rick, if you'd join us. I get to work directly with Rick. Rick is one of our department heads at the council, so I know him quite well, and it's a pleasure to recognize him. I want to thank him for joining us tonight. Rick joined the county back in May of 2015.
It's gone quickly.
It's gone quickly. He's been busy. He came in as economic development director, but he's actually got a varied path. So Rick has worked in retail. He drove a tractor trailer.
Yep.
And he is a bit of a news buff, and he worked at a number of newspapers before he went back to school. School was something you did maybe eight years after.
Yeah, took some time.
He experimented in some different fields, and decided he wanted to go back to school. Got a bachelor's degree in mass communication from USC, and that's really when he started his career in the newspaper business. He spent time at the Clinton Chronicle, the index journal of Greenwood, and finished up, at least in terms of media, at Sumter, at their newspaper, and that's where he joined the Sumter Development Board. And how they handle their economic development function there is that they have a development board that works very closely with the county, but is not an arm or a department of the county.
Correct.
And Rick sort of learned more about this field, second career, I guess, that he selected for himself, and very quickly advanced there in Sumter, and then joined the county after some successes there in Sumter in, in 2015. And in the tenure period he's been here, we've had a number of major investments that have been made. Of course, the most notable one in terms of capital investment and jobs created was with Samsung, but there's been a number of spinoff projects and investments from it. And you know, one of the things too, that gets maybe somewhat unnoticed, are expansions. And those are accomplished really by building and maintaining relationships with our existing industries and creating an environment that is conducive to doing business and gives them the security that they need to invest more money in our community, where he plays a central role in that. He's also currently the president of his professional association, South Carolina Economic Developers Association, and is, you'll finish that term up.
I actually finished that term up last Thursday.
Last Thursday?
Now I'm past president.
Past president, okay. The best job in the world, past president. Rick, we appreciate all that you do. On behalf of the county council, it's my pleasure too. Thank you for your years. So, simple. Okay, our second employee, Mr. Les Fishel. And know everyone, he is not retired. Although he had some conditions he might consider, but I don't think we afford it. I will recognize Les up to the end of the session, we have a minute. Les currently works in the public works department, and he came to work for the county 15 years ago. Came in as a driver operator, and Les very quickly became proficient on all of the equipment really we have in public works. And so public works is, you know, where we primarily deal with and maintain our roads and bridges. We've got a number of heavy pieces of equipment, motor graders, bush cutters, backhoes, dump trucks, and dura patchers patch the roads, and Les is really proficient on all of that. And kind of quickly rose to be one of our most proficient operators, and then took on a new challenge where he assumed some additional duties with our sign shop, because we manufacture a lot of our own signs, and so Les handles that. Subsequent to that, Les took on some responsibilities at the airport. He's one of our most knowledgeable employees when it comes to the Newberry County Airport. And then most recently, and this was this year, two, yeah, I was thinking it was a couple months ago. Okay, so a couple weeks ago, he assumed the role of crew leader. So he's got a leadership position within the public works department in this, you know, very important employee at Newberry County. And that's why it's my pleasure to recognize you on behalf of county council and our management team for your 15 years of service, and we look forward to many more of recognizing you. Yes, sir. And you're a bass player, right? And also a bass player. I should have said a bass player. Thank you.
Y'all will have to jam for us one day.
Yeah, it was a double bass.
That is absolutely the best part of our meeting, is to recognize our employees, because they are a vital part of Newberry County. All right. Fifth on the agenda is a resolution, number 032025, a resolution recognizing Ms. Vina Abrams for 24 years of service of Newberry County on the Board of Directors of the Central Midlands Council of Governments. With that, I will read the resolution. Whereas, "The first councils of governments was formed in 1967 when Governor Robert E. McNair signed legislation dividing the state of South Carolina into 10 official planning districts with the objective of creating a uniform geographical framework within which the planning, programming, and delivery of services by federal, state, and local government might be undertaken with maximum efficiency and effectiveness. And whereas, 'The Central Midlands Council of Government was established in 1969 and remains dedicated to improving and positively influencing the quality of life and economic development of the four county region it serves consisting of Fairfield, Lexington, Newberry, and Richland Counties. And whereas, 'The Central Midlands Council of Government is governed by a board of directors composed of state and local elected officials, county and municipal appointed officials, and community leaders. And whereas, 'Ms. Vina Abrams was first appointed to serve on the Board of Directors by Newberry County Council in 2001 and has since been reappointed five times to the board because of her dedication to improving quality of life in Newberry County and in the Central Midlands region of South Carolina.' And whereas, during her 24-year tenure, Ms. Abrams served as board chair in 2011 through 2013 and vice chair in 2009 through 2011, and participating on numerous standing and special committees, including the Regional Aging and Disability Advisory Committee, the Family Caregiver Support Program Subcommittee, and the Rural Transportation Planning Advisory Committee. And whereas, Ms. Abrams is also engaged in her community at the local level, she is a member of the Pi Beta Omega chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and is a former Ruortan and previously served on the Board of Directors of the Rotary Club. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Newberry County Council hereby recognizes Ms. Vina Abrams for her dedicated service to the residents of Newberry County, South Carolina, and the Central Midlands region of South Carolina, and is so resolved this 21st day of May 2025, Newberry County Council." Do I have a motion? We accept, have a motion by vice chair? Cease, second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Ms. Vina, will you come, please come forward?
I have approved of the serving of Ms. Vina for a little short stint. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate all you do for the council.
It has been my pleasure.
Mr. Cease has something. "And the Central Midlands of the Council of Government gave Walt McLeod an award, and she was not there on the day they presented him, so they gave it to me to bring back to Newberry County to present to her, and that's the award from the Council of Government. Thank you for your service."
Thank you.
As I'm a liberal in council, now I took the next place, so I've been working with her. I've been seeing her on Zoom calls.
Say as many words as you like.
It has been my pleasure to serve on the Central Midlands Council of Government, where I've been in Newberry County, the best county in the state.
Sixth item on our agenda, a resolution, number 042025, a resolution a resolution recognizing the Honorable Walter J. McLeod for 49 years of service to Newberry County on the Board of Directors of Central Midlands Council of Governments. I got Mr. Vice Chairman Cease here to read this resolution.
And Walt's unable to be here tonight. He had a family sick relative. He went to visit. And so I'm going to read this out and we'll get his award and have him come in and have a picture made. So the state of South Carolina, county of Newberry, resolution 04-25 honoring the Honorable Walt J. McLeod III. Whereas, the first councils of government were formed in 1967 when Governor Robert E. McNair signed legislation dividing the state into 10 official planning districts with the objective of creating a uniform geographical framework within which the planning, programming, and delivery of services by federal, state, and local governments might be undertaken with the maximum efficiency and effectiveness. And whereas, the Council of Midlands, whereas the Central Midlands Council of Government was established in 1969 and remains dedicated to improving, to positively influencing the quality of life and economic development in the four county regions serving consisting of Fairfield, Lexington, Newberry, and Richland Counties. And whereas, the Central Midlands Council of Government is governed by the Board of Directors composed of state and local elected officials, county and municipal appointed officials, and community leaders. And whereas, the Honorable Walt J. McLeod III, first appointed to serve on the Board of the Directors of Newberry County Council in 1976 and has since been reappointed numerous times because of his dedication to improving the quality of life in Newberry County and the Central Midlands regions of South Carolina. And whereas, during his 49 years of tenure, former representative Walt McLeod served as board chair in 1981 to 1982. And then again, in 2002 to 2003, he has chaired the Rural Transportation Planning Advisory Committee, served as a representative on the Central Midlands Development Corporation, and participated in numerous standing and special committees. And whereas, in addition to his service on the Board of Directors, former Representative McLeod was a member of the South Carolina General Assembly, served in the United States Navy, and attained the rank of captain, retired from the U.S. Navy Reserves, and enjoyed a distinguished career as a prominent attorney, received countless awards, accolades, and served his community on numerous boards, committees, and charities. And now, therefore, being resolved, the Newberry County Council hereby recognizes the Honorable Walt J. McLeod III for his dedicated service to the citizens of Newberry County and the Central Midlands region of South Carolina. And it so be resolved this 21st day of May 2025, Newberry County Council.
Do I have a motion to accept this resolution? Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. What a blessing to have two of the greats on that board along with you.
And passed, so it's approved by you.
There you go, there you go. Shared a will. All right, number seven on our agenda is a resolution number 052025, a resolution recognizing the achievements of Isaias Mesa. And I will read the resolution. Whereas, Isaias Mesa, a 12-year-old student of Newberry Middle School, has demonstrated exceptional dedication and talent in the sport of soccer from a young age. And whereas, Isaias began his soccer journey at the age of four at the Newberry YMCA, laying the foundation for his passion that has grown into a pursuit of excellence and international opportunity. And whereas, Isaias has been selected to join the prestigious 12U Barca Academy, a youth development program of FC Barcelona, one of the most successful and respected professional football clubs in the world. And whereas, through this program, Isaias will have the extraordinary opportunity to travel abroad this summer and compete in historic stadiums graced by many soccer, many of soccer's greatest players. And whereas, Isaias recently represented the United States in a global soccer competition featuring over 2,000 participants from 50 teams in 26 countries, where he scored two remarkable goals, one against Japan and one against Luxembourg. And whereas, the USA team finished an admirable 19th place overall. And Isaias contributions played a significant role in this accomplishment. And whereas, Isaias Mesa serves as an inspiring representative of his country, his country, the state of South Carolina and Newberry County, demonstrating the values of hard work, perseverance, and sportsmanship. Now, therefore, be resolved that Newberry County Council does hereby recognize and honor Isaias Mesa for his outstanding achievements and commitment to excellence in soccer and extends its best wishes for his continued success on and off the field. And so be it resolved this 21st day of May 2025. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Reverend Skerritt, second by Councilman Cease. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Please come forward, young man. It is outstanding to have youth of your caliber. Not many can say they have done all you have done and traveled where you have traveled, so congratulations. Much continued success. Keep me as proud. It's hard to top that. All right. Number eight, an ordinance number 05012025, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Newberry PV1 LLC, providing for a payment of fee and lieu of taxes, providing special source revenue credits, and addressing other matters related thereto. Mr. Schacher, you got a little explanation on that or?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to provide one. So this is an existing fee deal that Newberry County entered into a number of years ago with a proposed solar farm on Island Ford Road. The substance of the agreement remains the same. This one change is to extend the commencement date. And then that has an effect on the investment period as well so that the project can move forward. It's more of a, I guess, a legal argument versus a practical one. The Department of Revenue, how they have interpreted commencement dates is that the commencement date for a project is the end of the third tax year following the, essentially, the execution of the agreement. And then at that point, if it doesn't start before then, there is a five-year period to make investments in the project that would qualify for the fee deal. Some attorneys have interpreted as the investment has to, there has to be at least some investment that occurs within that commencement period prior to the conclusion of the third tax year following the date of the agreement. But the DOR has not. That's sort of the legal versus practical. There likely would not be an issue because Department of Revenue is consistent with their revenue rulings, but to make doubly sure that the company asks that we extend the investment period, so there's no question about it. That is the only thing in the agreement that is proposed to change.
Thank you for that information. This is the public hearing. All right. I now declare the public hearing open. It seems that no one wants to, has anything to speak about, so I will now declare the public hearing closed. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion? This be second reading. Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Skerritt. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number nine, ordinance number 05022025, an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, for the Newberry County budget for county ordinary purposes and for other county purposes for which the county may levy a tax and receive revenues to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real property in Newberry County for all county purposes, including sufficient taxes to pay the principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness of Newberry County payable during said fiscal year, to provide for matter-related Newberry County, and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues received by the county during said fiscal year, and to provide for borrowing in anticipation of tax collections by the issuance of one or more tax anticipation notes, if necessary. This is the public hearing on that. I now declare the public hearing open. Jeff, you have any, want to say anything about this before we?
Sure.
Before we have the public hearing?
Yeah, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to. Well, you know, we spent a good bit of time on the budget. You know, councils had work sessions, of course, staff, Ms. Debbie Kronberg here in Bremmer, other members of our staff, all our department heads, spent the better part of the time that's elapsed between January 1st and today, developing this, getting it in front of y'all, getting your feedback. And now we have this product in front of us. And so the way the budget is presented, or I guess compartmentalized, is there's 15 fiscal entities or discrete units called funds. And a fund has a series of self-balancing revenue and expenditure accounts. And so the four categories that we have, we have a general fund, we have a debt service fund, we have a capital projects fund, and we have special revenue funds. And we've got 12 of those. So that's most of our funds, if you're thinking about the 15, are in the special revenue fund category. The proposed budget for next year across all funds totals $94.8 million. That's a $12.1 million increase compared to the current fiscal year. And it's largely attributable to the capital project fund. That's where $8.9 million of the increase is. And that is a function of the ripening of the capital project sales tax projects. You know, we're at a point now where those projects are, of course, we've got two that we're asking y'all to consider awarding construction contracts on this evening. We'll have, you know, all of the projects that will either already be under contract or will become under contract during the 12-month period covered by this proposed budget. And so you'll see activity. And when there's construction activity, there are invoices that are paid. And so the $8.9 million largely is a function of the sale, the capital project sales tax projects moving forward. You'll also notice that there's a $1.4 million increase in the 12 special revenue funds. The bulk of that increase is in the Public Works Grant Fund. And we've actually got our Public Works Director in the audience, Mr. Josh Rowe. This is where many of Josh's road paving projects are budgeted. You know, we apply to the County Transportation Committee for gas tax funds. Those funds are called C funds. And then they are expended on road improvements that the CTC agrees to fund. And so we've got a number of projects that are proposed. Some of them are already approved projects. It's just a case where, for a variety of reasons, they're coming to, or we expect them to come into fruition in '25, '26. But those financial transactions have to be budgeted by council. So it's not necessarily just projects for this year. Some of these are previous awards for projects that will materialize in '25, '26. So that's really the bulk of the increase related to the special revenue funds. You know, I think most of us focus on the general fund. That tends to be, you know, where most of our focus is. And that's where most of our activity is. Most of our employees at the county, over 95% of them are budgeted in general fund. General fund is proposed to total $39.9 million. That's a $590,000 decrease compared to the current fiscal year. Let me tell you a little bit about that. You know, we took a very conservative approach to budgeting this year and have done the same thing for next year. But in this, coming up next year, we've got the implementation of reassessment. And county council made it clear during reassessment that y'all did not want to increase taxes. So the process that we're going to follow with reassessment, and Liz McDonald, our assessor, her staff, of course, Ms. Lomineck will be involved in this as well, Donna Lomineck, in the auditor's office, are in the process of revaluing property, following all of the requirements that they have to with the state of South Carolina for the revaluation. A big part of reassessment, and we don't use this word a lot, but it's in the title of it, is equalization. It's making sure that the burden of taxation is equitable, and they're evaluating that. And then we will follow the process in state law for rolling the millage back. Because, you know, our tax base will increase. I mean, the value of property total, the total value of property in Newberry County is going to go up. And think about it like a seesaw. When that end goes up, our millage will go down. I mean, that's how that works. And y'all expressed very early on in the budget process a commitment to that. So we took a very conservative approach to preparing the general fund budget to make sure that it could be accomplished with those parameters in mind. So what you'll see in general fund is there's no property tax, no fee, and no service charge increase. None of those rates are proposed to go up. The total number of part-time and full-time positions at the county are not proposed to change. They are not proposed to increase. In fact, in a couple places, or in one place in particular in administration, we eliminated two positions. There is 3% of payroll that is budgeted for employee increases. Council expressed some interest in looking at, for some of our more difficult positions to, the, an interest in allocating some money there to make us more competitive. You know, we're just, in some regards, we're behind an eight ball in some of those areas, so we'll try to get that addressed. We do expect some modest increases in health and workers' compensation insurance cost. I think it sounds like from the association of counties, we're looking pretty good on property side. In fact, we've lowered our expenditures by moving to a new insurance provider, the county association. That was something y'all authorized last year. We've got a pretty aggressive capital budget in the general fund. Not, we've got a capital project fund, but in the general fund, we also have capital expenditures of $4.5 million. This really pales in comparison to the $16.9 million that was requested by county departments. So we did the best that we could to evaluate, working with them, what our priorities are, and then we recommended those to y'all. But, you know, I guess we just all need to understand that we're just not capable at this point in time in addressing all of our needs. We just have to keep chipping away at it. And then I think the major change on the capital funding side is while the level of capital funding is very similar, or is proposed to be very similar next year to the current fiscal year, the sources of funding have changed. So instead of using the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds, you know, we closed that out, which, so we're compliant with all requirements related to ARPA. We have some sources of capital funding, including proposed lease purchase and a proposed GO bond that would fund these capital items. So that's really, I guess, the 100,000-foot level view of the proposed budget for the county for next year. And if y'all have any questions, or maybe some questions will come from the council, I'd be glad to answer those.
Very good. All right. I will now declare the public hearing open. Mr. Tyler Johnson?
Thank y'all for a few minutes tonight. I know you've worked hard on this and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I have two main points of concern with it. I know that we keep bringing up the salaries and I liked the idea of giving pay raises, but we've had retention issues in our low-salary positions. Blanket percentages is not the answer to address those positions. Blanket percentages give a adverse effect of widening the pay gap between higher-paid employees from those lower-paid employees. We need to find something that actually addresses the positions that we're losing to address that so that we can have retention and not be constantly reposting for job positions as they move on to other counties for higher salaries. Also, the use of fund balance. Also, the use of fund balance and to balance the budget this year. I know we've talked about getting it back down, hopefully because all of our departments don't do so, but I think starting off at the point of using fund balance, we need to always be adding to that fund balance, not taking away from it. We know as a, as a board and council that we have great deficiencies when it comes to our fire services, our rescue squads, keeping them furnished, and those are huge price tag items. The only way we can do that is effectively budgeting, getting that worked into our budget on a regularly occurring schedule, so that we know that it's coming up and we have to have it done. I think that the best way is to always have a balanced budget. Use of fund balance to begin with is a best-case scenario, we do come in, but we're already setting ourselves up to use fund balance, and that's never a good option with the budget. I appreciate y'all's time, I won't hold you up anymore. I know y'all have worked hard on it, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Tyler. And that is all we had signed up for the public hearing. So I will now declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion, this be second reading? Motion by Vice Chairman Sees, second. Second by Councilman Fulmer, any discussion? All in favor? Any adjournments? And item number ten, consideration and approval of a bid for renovating to classrooms and breezeway of Old Palmaria School, town of Palmaria, South Carolina, a two thousand twenty-two capital project sales tax project, bid number two zero two five dash three. Mr. Shaker, you got some? On this, please?
I've got some information for you. So I guess this is our first, actually, it's not. It's our, it's our second capital sales tax project that we've brought to you for approval. You know, we had some contracts related to the IT and security improvements at the courthouse, which are, have been, have been underway for some time now that came to you. This is one of our first projects, though, with a, I guess, a true general contractor that's coming to you. This project is, you know, some new lighting, new electrical service panels, rewiring, new storefront windows there, you know, when you're on Folk Street, which, you know, becomes Peak Road, you, you would see this, particularly in the cafeteria building, and there's some new soffits and painting along the breezeway. So I think, I think we're going to get a pretty good project. We were very pleased with the bids. You'll see that we had, had three bids come in. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was onsite. They are based rights outside of Newberry County, in Lawrence County, in the Joanna area. There, there were no alternates, there was just a base bid. The, their base bid was two hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which puts us in good position vis-à-vis the, the budget for the project. And we would recommend that y'all award to onsite.
Thanks for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Smith, second. Councilman Reader, any discussion? All in favor? Any adjournments? Item number eleven, consideration and approval for a bid for roadway improvements to Mossens Way at the South Carolina Highway two nineteen industrial park, bid number two zero two five dash four. Mr. Shaker.
Yes, sir. Let me get to the right place. This is a project we've talked a lot about. And involves the, at least the initial phase of it, the construction of a road that would extend Mossens Way, which is the road within the Newberry County Industrial Park, back out to two nineteen, creating a loop. And then the next phase of the project would be to resurface the existing road within the industrial park. The loop road makes that a lot easier to accomplish because you can deal with one lane at a time. You know, we can have one-way traffic go through the park. So this was, this was step one. You'll see in the bid tab that we had a very good response and a very tight spread of bids. We were very, very pleased with this. We would recommend that y'all award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Satterfield Construction Company in Greenwood. Their bid was two million two hundred fifty-eight thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And this is well within the, or it's within the construction budget for the project. And in the capital project fund budget, there is a division for this project proposed for next year. And I know you still have third reading to go on the budget, but there's a fairly healthy contingency built in there. So I think we should be in good shape to get this project built and then also tackle the next phase.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Smith, second. Second by Councilman Reader, any discussion? All in favor? Any adjournments? Item number twelve, consideration and approval of a bid for renovations to interior of Pope Building located at eleven nineteen Harrington Street, Newberry, South Carolina. That's bid number two zero two five dash five. Again, Mr. Shaker.
Yes, sir. Well, this is the building that is located at the corner of Harrington and Caldwell Street, so it's just, you know, it's right over there. And a lot of, a lot of history with that building. You know, I understand at one time it was a telegraph building, then it was a vet hospital. I think John Mark Hall, his granddaddy, had his vet's office there. And it's been county-owned for a number of years. At one point, the county attorney's office was there, and I think that's where this name, Pope Building, kind of originated. But this was budgeted in the current, current fiscal year budget. You would find that within the facilities, department budget. You know, Matt Barclay is, is the department head over that division, and this is one of the projects identified in that capital plan. We would recommend, and you probably looked at the bid tab, we have three, three bidders here, that y'all award to the lowest responsive and responsible bid, which came from W.E. Baker and Sons in Whitmire in the amount of sixty-four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, and that you also award the alternate of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is the addition of some wainscoting on the inside, which we could achieve a better look. And that will, like I said, that can be accomplished within max budget this year.
All right. Thank you for the explanation. Do I have a motion to accept the bid? Motion by Vice Chairman Sees, second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Any adjournments? Item fourteen. We had no executive session. Thir-, oh, excuse me, thirteen. Todd would be on my tail there. Item thirteen, consideration and approval of a bid for renovations to Whitmire City Gym, town of Whitmire, South Carolina, a two thousand twenty-two capital project sales tax project, bid number two zero two five dash six. Mr. Shaker.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is, this is a project up in Whitmire, this is City Gym, it's a capital project sales tax project there. The scope of work, there's a lot of mechanical work there. There's electrical upgrades, lighting upgrades, the mechanical systems, the renovation of the restrooms there so that they're accessible and ADA compliant. There are exterior entrances that are proposed to be improved so that they are ADA compliant. We've got a little bit of drainage on the, what I would call alleyway, sort of from my vantage point behind the building. I think of Main Street is sort of towards the front of the building, and also beside it that would be addressed. And there are some interior finishes as well, you know, the gym floor, the bleachers, and some roof and window replacement work as well. And you'll notice the bid tab on this one is a little busier. There were seven alternates, and the main purpose of the alternates, these were ads, is that there were question marks about whether or not when this project bid, it could be accomplished within the current budget for the project. And fortunately, it can be. We had a good response. We would recommend that y'all award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, who was W.E. Baker and Sons, also Whitmire. You can see that W.E. Baker and Sons' total bid was six hundred nine thousand forty-nine dollars. And when you add in the architectural and engineering fees, the fees related to project management, I believe there was a change order related to design as well, it can be accomplished within, I believe, twenty thousand dollars of the original allocation for the project on the ballot, the original ballot amount. Of course, we revised some of those totals because of inflation, but we, you know, pretty much right on the mark. The difference is negligible in the grand scheme.
Very good. Hearing the explanation, do I have a motion to accept? A motion by Councilman Reader, second. Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Any adjournments? Thank you, Mr. Reader. All right, item fourteen now. We did not have an executive session. Fifteen, any appointments tonight? No appointments? Public comments? No ones signed up? Comments from the county administrator?
I think the only thing I can add, of course, you know, we, I think we had a pretty good bid day last Thursday with Whitmire and Palmaria. We're glad to get the Harrington Street building going, and of course Mossens Way, that's been a project that's been many years in the making, so it's good to have that momentum going. Some ways, it kind of feels like an aircraft carrier, you kind of got to get going, and then it's, it's tough to stop once it gets moving. A couple of projects, though, that I would like to mention really briefly to y'all are also sales tax. One is Prosperity. We do have, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, not only was the playground equipment ordered for the two playgrounds, it has been installed. And I understand, I'm going to go take a look at it maybe this evening after the meeting, but I understand that, that a good job was done by the vendor. Those purchases were made off of state contracts, so we were able to move fairly quickly. That project's getting really close to being capable of being bid. There's just some finishing touches on the town center in terms of the design work there, and it'll have to go to construction documents, and then it'll be ready to go. Little Mountain, we had a pre-bid today, today, Little Mountain, had a good turnout, had about forty people in the room. So we're hopeful that that's a good sign that we'll have a number of bids and that they'll be very competitive. Of course, this is the renovations to Reunion Park and the addition of some features there. The bids are due back on June eleventh. So, and the goal is to have that under contract, and then construction begin after the reunion festival. We also have been in a little bit of a holding pattern on the detention center. There was some underground petroleum issues. This is historical, not on the site, but you know how, I think it was earlier mentioned we were talking about the late Greenwood plan about upstream and downstream? Well, that exists subsurface as well. And so, it resulted in some constituents being detected on the detention center property a number of years ago. And so, how D, now DES responds to that is they install monitoring wells, and then you basically monitor over time the concentration of those constituents that are problematic. Usually, it's petroleum-related. So what we've been waiting on, we had a project designed and ready to go, and Department of Corrections signed off on it, but DES has some resource limitations related to inspecting these wells when you ask them to either abandon them or relocate them. And thankfully, they finally were able to get to us, which we appreciated, did a great job. We got a report from them last week. We have one well where there's still some registration of constituents. The rest of them appear to be capable of being abandoned. Y'all have already awarded two contracts to contractors who are licensed to do that kind of work, so they're already under contract. And we had a Teams meeting, I believe it is, I don't think it's in-person, scheduled on Friday to get the ball rolling on that. And once those wells are out of the way, then the new dormitory at the detention center can be built. So there's good movement on that project. And of course, while it was not the top of the ballot, it was the project that had the largest allocation on the ballot. So we'll be anxious to get it bid and under contract.
Very good. Very good. Comments from council? Councilman Fulmer?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Glad we were able to recognize our state or our county employees on their years of service, that we greatly appreciate the dedication that our, our employees show to the county and, and sticking with us through the good and the bad. So, anyway, huge appreciation there. I also would like to go on record, I, the last council meeting, I was able to hear, but I wasn't, y'all weren't able to hear me, but I had two young ladies here to represent a program very near and dear to me, and that's, that was Ms. Elena West and Ms. Mallory Fulmer representing 4H. And I would like to go on record to say I greatly appreciate them coming in and giving us that update on the programs they have, which are a, a great benefit to our young people in, in Newberry County. So, huge appreciation to them for, for coming in and giving us that. So, other than that, that's all I have.
Very good. Councilman Reader?
Yes, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I would like to also congratulate those employees who received the year awards. I'd also like to congratulate the individuals who received the resolutions tonight, Ms. Abrams, Representative McLeod, and the young gentleman.
He says.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not going to try it. For the soccer award. That is a great, young man at the age of twelve doing very good things. And I also like to congratulate all the individuals that will be graduating Newberry High School at eight AM in the morning, Mick Carolina at eight AM Fri- Friday morning, and Whitmire at seven o'clock on Friday night. So I'd like to congratulate all those newly high school graduates, and may they go on to do successful things in their lives.
Absolutely. Councilman Smith?
I'd like to echo what everybody else has said also, and I'd like to thank all our first responders that we've had, have been really bad last couple of days, been really busy, thank them for all they do for us, and also for, we're off Monday for Memorial Day and to honor all the veterans that had the ultimate sacrifice for us. Like to thank all those family members.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Scurry?
Good things, man.
Good things, man. Vice Chair?
Thank everybody for coming out. Thank the county employees for giving us their years of service and everything. Ms. Abrams and, and Walt McLeod for their service to the council of government, great number of years, and, you know, hopefully, I don't know if I'll be on there long or not, but, and also, the great job our first responders did for the missing person up in Whitmire, they were able to locate that person. It was, it took a team effort from everybody, and they did a great job. And also, the staff, great job putting our budget together, and also, all the recap and, and background information on all the bids, the ordinances, the data, all that stuff you gave out tonight, Jeff, thank you again.
I'll echo everybody's comments. We have a outstanding county staff, outstanding county residents, and people willing to serve and work for Newberry County. We couldn't do without you. So thank you all, our first responders, top-notch. Most of them are volunteers, so top-notch. Can't thank them enough.
All right. Future meetings. Memorial Day holiday, May twenty-sixth, offices are closed. Newberry County Council Work Session, June fourth at five PM. Newberry County Council, June fourth at six PM. Newberry County Economic Development Committee, June ninth at five PM. Newberry County Council Work Session, June eighteenth at five PM. Newberry County Council, June eighteenth at six PM, and Newberry County Finance Committee, June twenty-third at five PM. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Scurry, any discussion? All, all in favor? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.